Great, it is seven o'clock, so if you can go ahead and get started, if we can have a roll call, please.
Trustee Marcus is absent. Trustee Weekly?
Present.
Trustee McAvoy?
Vice President Wells?
Here.
President Lawson.
I'm here. Welcome to the first board meeting of the 2425 school year. Let's see, the public is encouraged to speak to the board on issues of concern, whether or not the issue is on the agenda. To address the board, please complete a speaker's card available at the back of the room, and you can bring it to Evelyn at the desk. Public comments are limited to three minutes each unless otherwise noted. Sorry, I had a pop up. If you wish to speak to the board on a subject listed on the agenda, you'll be called on at the time the item is being considered by the board. If the item is not on the agenda, you'll be called on during oral communication. Just double check our attendees. It looks like we don't have anybody needing translation. So. All right. So that brings us to changes to the agenda. With Cecilia absent, we wanted to pull 6.1, and we can go over those when she's here to add to the discussion. Anybody have any other changes? None? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's see. We do not have any oral. Do you have a card? That's for a later item. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So that brings us to our consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Just flying through this agenda, you guys. Goodness. So that brings us to 8.1, Adoption of Resolution 1, Approval of Ed Code Options for Teaching Assignments for the 2425 School Year.
Are there any questions? This was similar to the agenda item brought in June, and we have a few lingering items on there, so before the school year starts.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
I think we approve 8.1. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
8.2, Approval of the LCAP Federal Addendum for the 2425 School Year.
Does anyone have any questions on this with the addendum? Catherine's on line two. Are there any questions?
Oh, is she?
Yeah.
Um, oh, yeah. Okay, Catherine is here. If you guys have some.
Might be worthwhile just to give the public 30 seconds of like, what is this?
Yeah, definitely. Anna, would you like to?
And is Catherine Catherine or something?
Yeah, she's.
Yes, she is. She is. So she can speak also.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, hi.
Wonderful. Hi, so thank you. So for the federal addendum is an additional component of our annual LCAP. And the federal addendum specifically addresses how we're going to use our federal dollars. So we have Title 1, Title 2, Title 3, Title 4. So Title 1 is supplemental. It's how we support our students, our unduplicated students with supplemental education in resources. Title 2 is specifically in the area of supporting teachers and improving educational outcomes with best practices in instruction with teachers and administration and site and school personnel. And so we use federal funds in Title 2 for things like PD, which we've been doing all this week. Title 3 has specifically allocated federal dollars for our English learners. And Title 3 also has a component for supporting our immigrant youth. And then Title 4, the last of our title, title funds that we receive in Redwood City School District, is specifically for additional educational opportunities beyond just academics. So things like science, art, mental health, social emotional learning. So those four funds we receive in the Redwood City School District and use for many of our students to, to support the LCAP. And so we have allocated our funding, you can see in the plan, in the different four areas, and really focusing in all of our title areas for intentional planning and instructional practices to address our English learners throughout this school year.
And then just to clarify, this isn't a change to the LCAP. This is just a reporting requirement of how the, how these funds are being spent for it.
You are correct.
You are correct.
Well, thanks for the explanation, Catherine. I'll make a motion to approve. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you, Catherine. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks.
8.3, Approval of Agreement Between RCSD and Swing Education.
Thank you. So Swing Education has been in existence in our district for a few years, and it was a result of the concern and worry of filling primarily teacher substitute absences, either through typical absences, sick and personal, but also the need for planning days. We've prioritized them for hard-to-fill vacancies such as special ed, middle school, and bilingual, and have actually had quite a great success. Our complaints of lack of subs have decreased dramatically, which is pretty remarkable. Not saying it doesn't, it's not, you know, out of existence, but it has, it's been quite amazing. In fact, one board member asked me for some data. I was able to pull, I did pull a report last March. We had about 445 sub days that were utilized in lieu of an unfilled absence, which is, which is great. So in this particular item, we are asking for the board to approve our contract that we have had in the years past. But also, a new item, which is an out-of-the-box idea, is that we are going to partner with Swing. We'll be paying essentially a grant to us to hire a half-time credential analyst who will process substitute applications. And then we have priority to utilize these individuals who live in San Mateo and Santa Clara Counties for five days out of the subsequent 60 days after their application is processed. So it's an automatic way for us to increase our subpool quite remarkably, and they're expecting between 10 to 20 applications a week. So I'm looking forward to see what that's going to be like. It will be year by year, but we've agreed on a three-year term for this particular idea. And we also get a discount on the subservices, the Swing services, I should say. So that is the Swing contract brought to you tonight.
Thank you. Any questions?
Sounds like they're a vendor we've been using. We've been relatively happy with them. Is this the sort of thing that we would bid out and check other folks, or is it just a small enough contract that's worked well enough that there's no real need to do aggressive bidding?
No, great question. There's very few gigs in town. So similar to the item that's brand new on consent that was just approved, Scoot, that's a new company, two years old. So we have really exhausted all of our local searches for substitutes. That's really what we're looking for, people that live locally and the companies that work with them, but we're always on the lookout. So the HR network in San Mateo County is pretty strong, and we're consistently sharing ideas, similar to how we're sharing ideas with others about our international teacher pool. That's how I found Scoot is through a call league. So to answer your question, yes, we are definitely and earnestly looking for others that do similar work to reduce any type of vacancies that we have even with absences.
Yes, so Wendy, one question I had, because, you know, I saw the Scoot then and the consent, and then this one under action. So how would you just, could you just walk through like how it would work in the morning, or I guess the day before, or the week before, depending upon when you, I mean, sometimes you know the subs ahead of time because it's for a training day or whatever. But then sometimes it's someone's sick, right? So I was curious how these would complement each other, and then what other sources you might be using, just.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, there's multiple pathways. So if we're speaking about just absences, so a sick day here, a personal day there, a planning day, the planning days and probably about, I would say 40% of our absences, we know in advance, maternity leaves, planning days for PD, substitutes that are called for SST IEP meetings, things like that. And so for that, we always put out to our, our regular subs first for a few reasons. One, we have relationships. Two, it's less expensive. And three, you know, the schools have adapted relationships with individuals, and it's a little bit more seamless. When it gets to a point where we have not been able to fill, so it depends on the timeline. If we know about a maternity leave and we have three months, that's a different window than if we know tomorrow. Then for hard-to-fill positions, we will utilize Swing next. We haven't started with Scoot yet, so this will be brand new. And Scoot also does more of a pool of classified staff as well. They have teachers, and they actually have a Grow Your Own program too, which we're entertaining and learning about, where a person would essentially be like a guest teacher for a year and then move into an intern program. So that's really new for them. We're starting out with a subpiece first, but we can move into that area, and that's, the MOU talks about that. So, so Scoot would then also be another group that we look for for our classified staff, which historically has really not happened. We, this year have had librarians, substitutes, and, and office and paras, but other types of classified roles really haven't been part of our subpool. We essentially manage until the person returns, unless it's a long-term situation, that's a little different. So to answer your question, there are multiple pathways. It just depends on the circumstances. What's nice about the Swing subs is that they pick up our hard-to-fill positions quickly. So we still do reach out to our standard group, but within 48 hours, if something's not filled, we want it filled within 24 hours of the person having the absence at least. So that's been, you know, our aggressive timelines we've been working with.
And what are the level of like qualifications or certifications that the teachers that we get from Swing, you know, compared to a teacher that we would hire for the district?
Exactly the same.
Like.
Well, thanks for answering my questions about how Swing was effective. I remember when we had approved it, like 2021, I think, and then, you know, doing it again now. And then, you know, at the time, it was sort of pushing like, hey, this is new and a new kind of platform, and it's neat to see that we're continuing to push how we can creatively think outside the box for filling these positions with this grant, and how that sort of gives priority access to, to, you know, substitutes that are in the area. So we, we need to see how that works for filling these positions. So, thanks for that.
No, I agree. And just one more item to add. What's interesting is the buyout rate for a Swing substitute to start on the teacher pipeline pathway is relatively small. So I just was speaking to somebody this morning who went to our new teacher orientation, because she's starting off in a classroom for an international teacher that is going to be delayed. And she, she just was so excited about all the district had to offer, and that would, and, and so we're starting the pipeline process with her. And that's one great example of how we are looking at different ways to, to look at the shortage differently.
Yeah, it sounds like a great way to start building a relationship at the very, very top of the funnel, before they've even decided that they want to become a teacher. So.
Right.
That's great.
Yeah, that's good.
Fantastic. I'm, I'm curious, what are some things that we do maybe as a district to make sure that the handoff is smooth? Like if, let's say a teacher is going to be out of town for a week, and we want to make sure that things continue smoothly in the, in the class with continuing on with the curriculum that's there. What, what are some ways that we, we hand that off to the sub and then hand it back to the teacher as they come back in?
Yes. So for the Swing substitutes, they have thorough trainings through Swing, because that's what they're doing all day, every day. We just finished our substitute trainings through Nicole Crawford for our CSD substitutes. And so that's sort of a generalized training to start off the year. But then the teachers upload their lesson plans and their bell schedules and their class lists and so forth to a private platform for that handoff. And then the office manager greets the substitute and carries them through the day essentially with the principal check-ins. For those that were going to be in long-term positions, meet with the staff development team to get caught up and to assist. And then, of course, our special ed department, Jude Noyes has created a whole module for people that will be in the class temporarily. So.
So great. I just, I remember when I was a kid, and whenever the teacher was out, a sub would come in and just like play a movie for us. It was just great. And so just, I, I think it's great that we have really highly qualified substitute teachers coming in and a handoff plan that's thoughtful for making sure that we're continuing to deliver curriculum to kids.
Yes, and that's a really good point, because we want it to be continuous. Or else the teacher also gets frustrated about being out and recognizing the delays and so forth. So for our current subs in Redwood City, outside of Swing and Scoot, we, we really have, I, I think, a nice comprehensive handoff in the relationships. I mean, we have teachers emailing and calling the substitutes that are frequent, or schools that build up these relationships. And so there's sort of, there's a whole favorite system on, on our frontline platform that, that people utilize, you know, to help with that.
And for those people that are going to be out for a long period of time, we also provide some crossover time with the teacher.
Oh, yes, of course.
maternity leave and so forth. So they're in the classroom together before the teacher leaves, and it's a
Yes.
really soft handoff and stuff like.
Yeah, either before and after.
Yeah.
Yes. I know.
Teacher's been with me for months.
Yeah, that's true. So we're always growing and learning and always get interested in new ideas on how to do this, because we, we have all this great work we want to do in general, aside from sick days and, and personal days for our planning days, and we, we need there to be consistency. So.
So Wendy, I just want to say thank you very much, because, you know, going back 17 years ago, 15 years, we didn't have any of this. And I remember like upstairs, you know, you'd have somebody making frantic phone calls and all of this. And I know you've really sought out these different platforms and stuff. So thank you for doing that. I think it really makes a difference. Because for the last couple of years, we haven't heard from as many, you know, remember, we were hearing from school sites that, oh, my goodness, we, we can't find any subs, or, you know, we'd hear complaints from parents or teachers or whomever. So anyway, I, I haven't heard that certainly last year in the same way. So anyway, I just want to say thank you, because I, I know it's taken some extra work to make this happen.
Yeah, you're welcome. And big kudos to the tech department. That, I don't know if you recall, in an earlier board meeting, a teacher was like, wouldn't it be great to have a laptop? I mean, we're thinking, oh, my gosh, these littlest things, you know, that, of course. So, you know, we worked on making that happen. So we know we're growing and, and changing as we.
Well, technology has come a long ways, right? We didn't have any of this back in the day. So anyway, that's great.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm glad to hear that, that, the laptop thing has worked out, because when, I can't remember who it was that said that, but I was like, um, yeah, that's something we should be doing. How have we not been doing that yet?
Well, it makes sense. You know, the teacher takes their laptop home, just in typical life, and they're like, wait, we don't have one yet. I know. We have amazing student leaders in the room that always kind of assist in that department, and it works out. But yes, that was sort of a no-brainer, but live and learn. Thanks.
Thank you very much. So.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to approve this.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. This is 8.4, Approval of Personal Changes.
So on that note, one of the items here is that credential analyst that I just mentioned in the previous item for Swing. We also have a need that had popped up over the summer, two needs actually, one for an additional LVN for a special ed student. And then due to enrollment changes at Kennedy increases, there is a need for a, a new art teacher, an additional art teacher to help with the elective program there. It, all the other classes worked out number-wise, but we needed one more elective teacher.
Do you know off the top of your head, is the current art teacher at, at Kennedy a full-time? Yeah, so this is adding a.
Right, it'll be, right. Yeah, 1.5. Yeah, it's great. And that person's been hired, so that was nice too.
There are no other questions? We need a motion?
I move we approve. I'll second. Hooray for Art.
Aye.
Wonderful. 8.5, Approval of a Tenet of Agreement Between California School Employee Association, Chapter 5, and the Redwood City School District.
Thank you. Well, I'm so pleased to bring this tonight. What a success. Big thank you to the district team, Rick and Patricia Perez, of course, leading the charge, and we also have Shannon Laney representing the administrators. And then, of course, to the CSCA team, that is represented by one representative in each classification. So it's quite a large team, actually. But we were able to get through many things in negotiations and for typical contract things and so forth. But one big celebration was the forward-thinking of CSCA to, for the first time in my tenure, certainly in HR, look ahead for, you know, agreeing to essentially a 2425 compensation proposal. We still will have one other article to open, which is fine, and health benefits, of course, that occur in January. But in general, I'm really pleased with this new step forward. So that was a nice celebration over the summer.
Right. And then, so just to clarify for the audience, then CSCA will be caught up in the salary increases.
Yes.
As the other employees have been, because we were able to settle those.
In advance.
In advance, right. And so this is great, because CSCA for a while has been operating in the rears, you know, not getting, anyway, so I was super excited to see this for sure.
Yes, it was, it's a great step forward. So all of CSCA members will receive the 2324 raise and then the 2425 raise as well, as the business office can accommodate those changes. Yeah, and then the timesheets, the retroactive, of course, will be a little more delayed, but in general, they've, they've been working hard on that. So.
Yeah, congratulations to the negotiation teams for bringing the soap to the line. And I just, I, you know, thank you for working right up to the July 4th holiday. It's, I don't remember the exact date of it. It was like the end of June, the very beginning of July. So that was a, a great summary, you know.
Great, thank you. You're welcome.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. All those in favor? Aye. Great, thank you very much. Um, let's see, we are on, so, Brad, 8.6 through 8.9 are all related, and we do have a speaker's card on this. If you want to take that now?
I go to the speaker.
Yeah, Jessica, come on up.
Uh, we also have a short presentation that's going to kind of tie.
Oh, do you want to do the presentation first?
Do you want to give the presentation? Is that okay, Jessica? And then have the public comment?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't realize there was a presentation.
And then Janet, do you want to talk about it all together, or?
Yeah.
Like, how do you want to, how do you want to?
Well, it, it depends on the presentation. I'm assuming they're all going to be together.
Yeah, it's going to be a presentation that covers all four of the items, and then we can go.
And then, yeah, we'll have to do the.
All right.
I'm approaching. And tonight during the presentation, I guess we should start the beginning. Rich Wilmar, still new, Director of Child Nutrition Services, is here to talk about the four bids that we put out publicly over the summer in preparation for the 2425 school year. So without all, hand it over to Richie.
If you can just turn your microphone on real quick on the right side, the No, the, the one next to the three dots. No, not yet. Press the one with the person button on it. There you go.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you.
Well, hello and thank you, Board, Cabinet, and Superintendent Baker. This is awesome to be standing in front of you right now for this reason. As you know, that the school district went out for bids for our student nutrition department. So, next slide, please. So the RFP background expectations and process, as of July 1st, the district, I, I would say smoothly transitioned from being under the helm of a management company for a significant amount of years. And we jumped right into our summer program without a hitch, continued to feed students and everything. So it was quite an accomplishment, and it gave a lot of confidence, I hope, to the district and the community, but also to our team. Now, with the bid process, something that's really important for us as a department specifically managing these vendors and with the RFP, is to create the standards and expectations. They're not going to be just supplying a service for us, but they're going to be an extension of what we want our program to be. So it's going to be about how we manage them to make our program the best we can. Of course, ensuring food safety standards are met and the highest quality products are delivered. Now that we are going to start to reinvest in the program, we want to bring in better product, local product. We are breaking the old-school model of ordering advanced freezing items and things like that. So we want to utilize, we're in one of the most amazing places in the country, and we have access to so much, so we want to take advantage of that. The grocery RFP breakdown was posted for nearly a full month. Just so many items are in this group of grocery. And we had two, what we call Broadliner bids. Broadliners are more like national companies that do a little bit of everything. They cover anything from your grocery products. They'll even have cleaning agents, containers, you know, service ware, things like that. They're kind of a one-stop shop to have for any food operation. The selected vendor was Cisco, and that's it. And then, next slide, please. The Produce RFP was posted for a little bit shorter amount of time. We were very fortunate to have four bids to compare against one another. And, and it was, it was a great opportunity based on where we're at. The selected vendor was Pacific Rim Produce, and they're based in the East Bay, and they service all over the area. They'll be providing fresh fruits and vegetables for us. The Bread and Bakery RFP was posted for the same amount of time as the Produce. We were fortunate to have three companies come and bid on that business as well, and the selected vendor was Bonami Baking Company. The products that they'll be providing will be any of our bread products. It can range from breakfast and lunch. The whole grain component is mandatory on our menus as one of the compliant items. So working with a local bakery that has traceable product, more freshly milled and sourced product, it's going to be easy, easier to digest for the students. And then the dairy was done as an IFP, as most of the dairy products are all relatively the same, so it was done just based on pricing. And Daylight Foods came out on top for that, and we're excited to work with them as well. Any questions?
Questions first, and then we'll take public comment and then discussion? Is there any?
So first off, I, I really appreciate the sequencing that we used here of using a rubric for how we were going to go and evaluate these vendors. We had multiple vendors apply in each. We scored them, and we, we selected the best. So I just think like that, that's really good operational discipline, and I, I want to applaud that. Kind of wish I could have been on the bread tasting committee right now. I'm, I'm glad they actually have people try, try stuff out. So I think that's great. Where there were like large vendors that maybe didn't apply, do we have any idea like why, like, you know, UnFi, United Natural Foods, like, that's like Whole Foods suppliers, like, i- if there were other big companies like Cisco that might have applied but didn't, do we, do we have any signal on, on why they didn't apply?
Not directly, but that's a great question. So a lot of these larger companies sometimes do not have a school-specific division. So with the ones that did apply, have a very school-specific division that, that manages that type of, of accounts. So as schools, they know operate very differently than some of your restaurants and things, as Cisco and Gold Star would service restaurants in the area and hotels. They can also have a division that helps support and recognize what's needed for school districts. So some of those might have the ability to, but they, they might not, might not be as a high of a priority for them.
Fair. And, and I, I love the stance as well of like trying to get regular fresh deliveries versus just like bulk delivery and chuck it in the freezer. I think that's fantastic. It does imply that maybe there's some fragility in terms of the supply chain, because like if we need regular deliveries and then a regular delivery doesn't show up, do we have a sense for like a Plan B for what, what we do, how we handle it, if like a supplier is temporarily unavailable?
Absolutely. And, and you got to stay nimble in this side of the world. Having been in a previous school district during the pandemic, we never used the, the term supply chain issue shortage once. Partnering with your vendors, again, being, having them be an extension of us, and we set out what we need, and then we'll also always have backups for what we need as well, staying within our purchase threshold. So we do have backups for these as well, but these are going to be our primary vendors.
In, in terms of safety, I noticed we selected the Bonami Baking Company of Pittsburgh, and it looks like the FDA issued them a warning letter in 2022. Was that resolved to your satisfaction?
Absolutely.
Cool.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for your thoughtfulness.
Yeah, you're very welcome.
Okay, Jessica, we'll take your public comment.
Hey, everyone. I am the parent of two kids at Orion. I am really excited about the changes that RCSD is making to their school meals. And I support the food supplier bid awards that you're considering today. These awards are important for the district to be able to source. These awards are important for the district to be able to source school meal ingredients and to have the ability, um, to build a menu that meets the needs of our district and students. So thank you so much, Richie, Rick, and the rest of the district staff who have worked so hard on the R F Ps, on the full bid process. Um, I love the diversity of options and the flexibility that these give us. And so I'm really excited. I'm also hopeful that having these vendors in place will kind of lay the groundwork for the central kitchen or the major kitchen infrastructure improvements that are so direly needed, um, to be able to continue to feed our students. Um, that funding was one of the line items that we campaigned on for the school bond measure S. And there's still a lot of interest and excitement around it. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it.
Think this is your first time coming and speaking to the board, Richie. So welcome to Redwood City School District. We're very excited to have you here and the the changes that you're going to bring. And congratulations on the smooth transition to, um, you know, in July into the summer program. So that's, that was great to hear. Um, I, I like this, I like the concept that you, you call it breaking the old school model. I think that there are quite a few things in, you know, in education that we look at and say, maybe these are old school models and we need to make the change there. And food service, of course, is one of them. And it's really neat to see it coming together, uh, and the traction in there. Um, I like the scorecards as well. I thought that it was really easy rubric. I really appreciated the focus on local sources, small businesses, underrepresented suppliers and owners. I thought, um, what a great way to make sure that uh, we're doing right by the world, but also being able to encourage, um, you know, uh, suppliers that may not have, um, said, hey, I want to go off and supply a school from, you know, being able to come in and have an advantage over some of the, you called them broadliners, but these more national companies that might be able to compete on price but not quality. Um, and we needed to be able to get that into the scorecard. So I really appreciated seeing that. Um, the one thing I did want to ask was the, um, oh, and also you answered a bunch of my questions over the weekend and your presentation did too. I didn't know what grocery products were versus like, the other ones were really kind of self-explanatory. So, um, that, you know, we got covered there. I didn't ask this one because Wikipedia answered it to me, but I didn't know what a bread conditioner was. So that was really, um, you know, I'm really glad that that was a low scoring item after reading about it. So, uh, uh, thank you that. And then for the grocery products, um, you know, one of the things I was wondering was that it, you know, there were the only two bids, but now that I know what's, what, how many, what the variety of things that they need to supply, that kind of made sense to me. Um, the one thing I did want to ask, and I'll, I'll do all Rick's here too, is just the, the not to exceed mounts came up to about the same amount of our, our fund thirteen budget last year, so around two point six million. Um, and I'm just curious, like, is that in basically in ballpark of what we were budgeting for from the approved budget? Like, no surprises there. That all makes sense. Okay. Cool. Yeah, this is exciting. Um, you know, I look forward to, uh, maybe in one of the school sites going in and buying a school lunch and trying it out myself. So thanks.
Yeah, so, um, welcome Richie. I, I was, it was nice to meet you towards the end of the school year last year. And it sounds like you're really busy in the summer. So that's great. Um, seems like things are off to a really good start. So I wanted to say thank you and welcome. And I won't repeat everything that Mike said and David said, but totally agree. Love the whole scoring sheet and everything that you're using. So that's great. Um, I did want to give a shout out to Jessica who spoke and just say, you know, thank you for your leadership in really evolving, helping us evolve our program. You was kind of the leader of the parent group and the whole parents who got together. You worked really collaboratively with the board, with Dr. Baker, with our district staff, with our nutritional people to really, um, share information with us. And, you know, I know it took a little while to make a movement, but as you know, none of these things move quickly, particularly when you've been working with a vendor for a long time and that something's new. Nobody wants to be the guinea pig. So anyway, you really helped us get there. So I just wanted to say thank you. I, I really appreciate it. And I think it's a great example of when we work well with our parents and our community, that we can make great things together. Um, and that's really what, you know, the board of directors is here. We're supposed to be liaisons with the community. And I feel like, you know, that that this really was sort of an example of how that works in democracy. So important to give you a shout out, Jessica, and all the parents who helped us get here. Um, and then just finally again, welcome Richie. And I'm really excited and I'm with Mike. I need to get out there and buy a lunch. Come out and see it. So thank you.
Just want to underscore that, you know, thank both of you. Uh, I think it's, it's really great just to see democracy in action. The very small number of people with a really clear vision for something that really ought to happen, working inclusively and cooperatively, um, can get big things done. So bravo to that and, um, can't wait to see more of that in action.
And I will just second, everything that was said here is, Jessica, thank you, um, just all of your work on this too. I really appreciate the, the parent led effort, um, to make these changes. And Richie, welcome. Um, I'm really excited about, you know, the direction the district has gotten with this. So wonderful. Thank you for the presentation also.
Yeah, I'd just like to add a couple of things, uh, you know, formal welcome to Richie in this venue as well. Um, and just the enormity of what's transpired, you know, since the end of April. Shouldn't be understated, right? A- as mentioned, we've had a longstanding relationship with a vendor. Uh, we brought in a very qualified candidate to lead the ship, so to speak, of C N S. Uh, and he's been able to go in there, uh, and make immediate changes, uh, as well as one thing that we didn't talk about tonight, but we will at a future presentation after the school year starts, just the, uh, increase in, staff morale, I think even, uh, has been already witnessed, right? With them having, uh, ownership and being able to assist with maybe not making the final decision, but putting input into the decisions that are happening in the kitchens. Uh, one thing that we also didn't talk about tonight, uh, you know, Richie took a couple of staff members to Culinary Institute of America this summer for some training, you may have seen some of the pictures. Uh, but that brought a new level of ownership in with that department as well. And that spread even with the members who weren't able to go or weren't selected to go at that point in time, right? So a lot of good things are happening. Uh, and this is just the first step, right? So, uh, you know, having our own food contracts now rather than going to one vendor and saying, hey, we need all of this. And then they pull it from their resources, right? So now we are, uh, the next, the next person in line that has to hold them accountable, as Richie mentioned in the presentation. Uh, so that's really exciting. Uh, so a lot of good things are happening. Uh, and as I said, after we get through, you know, a month or two a school, we'll come back with kind of, uh, philosophical envisioning and where we're at now and where we'll be, uh, in the future. Uh, but changes will be small at first. It may be higher quality product, but some things will look similar when we first start the school year, right? Staff hasn't been here all summer. Uh, so he's gaining back all of his staff over the next couple of days. Uh, and then moving forward with that. So, uh, we'll keep you updated on that. And we're very excited. And, and thank you, Richie, for, uh, the work on this.
So I think we need to take these one by one, right? So, um, we'll start with eight point six, the bid to supply bread and bakery products.
I approve bread.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
All those in favor? Uh, eight point seven award of bid to supply grocery products.
All right, I, 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 I already, I already made my comments about groceries. So I'll, uh, with that, I'll make a motion to approve. Seconded.
All those in favor? Uh, eight point eight award to, award of bid to supply fresh produce and services.
Um, I'll make a motion for fresh produce and services.
I second freshness.
All those in favor? And, uh, eight point nine award of bid to supply dairy services.
I move to approve dairy.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. Uh, item nine, Board and Superintendent Reports. Anything to report?
I've got nothing from this summer, yeah.
Excited to be back.
Well, we started, uh, last week with our principal professional development and we met every day, Monday through Friday for half a day. And, uh, it was exciting and, um, at some times a little stressful and anxiety because of everything that's moving forward. Uh, we do have some new assistant principals with us and some vice, the vice principals, assistant principals, and then also some other coordinators that are working as um, coordinators for student services as opposed to a vice principal. And they'll, you'll get to meet them in the near future. But we will do a presentation. I'll start with a presentation within probably the next board meeting of what we covered and where we're going this year with the administrators. The other thing that started also, we have been working with a couple of, well, we started with Garfield, working with Garfield the other day and some staff members at C Z I. Anna was, uh, very much present at that meeting, uh, along with Sarah Shackel, who led it and was doing a very good job. And then there was another presentation today with the C R L P. Was it not, there was not, I got confused.
Uh, today, what, what was the Roosevelt and Garfield?
Right, C S I.
For the C S I schools, we were, we have partnerships with, um, teacher created materials, which is our language R. But they also provide professional development with teachers in terms of integrated E L D. And so, um, it was wonderful to see today. We had, uh, I would say we almost had about maybe ninety percent of the Roosevelt and Garfield staff present. All our staff development was present. Um, because we're, we're looking out to roll out a little bit more of a different type of coaching model um, at the sites. Um, and so because they're in the C S I, we decided to do this training along with the trainer today. Um, and really let, just shed a little, a light of things they know. Um, but really the teachers, I was reading because we asked for feedback. I, it was not one negative feedback. Everybody was just so like, I want to take this back and I want to take this and these are my next steps. So I think it was great to start the year. And then we realized Catherine and I were sitting there like, we should have had this with all of the schools. But you know, it, it comes down to where to hold it and how, because we, we just happened to be able to do this with the C S I schools. Um, but we're now starting to plan for next year. Um, but it was really wonderful to see the teachers all engaged, all really looking forward to the new year. Um, and so even our new teachers who attended the C R L P training Monday and Tuesday, um, great group of new teachers. We don't have a lot. Um, um, so it's been nice that we had, didn't have too many. Um, but they were all very excited and welcomed. And we had them welcome today too for the new teacher institute. So it's been great to see everyone coming back smiles and happy. And tomorrow's our big kickoff. So it's been busy.
Right. And today was the new teachers. All the teachers had induction. Not induction, not the induction program itself, but a, an introduction to the school district. And it started this morning at eight fifteen, I believe, eight thirty. And many of us were there to introduce ourselves and talk about the district. Um, I know, Anna, you came later on in, during the day, but we also had Wendy, we had, uh, Carlos was there about technology and your needs and what you need to do if something does happen and you computer's not working. This is what you're, who you're going to call and we'll make sure we get it done for you right away. Plus, talking about different platforms. So Carlos took that on today. The other person that was there was, um, Katrina. Katrina talked about her position as the wellness coordinator in the district, I should say, the director, and also how we want people them, we want them to be healthy, mentally, physically. So there is going to be a rollout of, um, resources for all our staff members in case you're feeling anxious, in case you're feeling depressed or, or whatever. Um, here's where you can go. And this is provided by the Sequoia Healthcare District. So that was good to become, come forward. And as I said, Antonia was there to talk about student services. So, and then Wendy, of course, H R, and she took on a slide from the business office that was in there. She forgot to get somebody from the business office. Sorry, Rick. But we had the information. We had everything that, who'd contact for what. Um, so, and, and it's great. It's a great group of people that were there with us today. They're brand new to the, some brand new to the profession. Spoke to a teacher who is from, coming from Merced. Uh, it's his first year. He's going to be teaching fourth grade at Hoover. Very excited, was doing sub, some subbing in Merced prior, but now, um, he's here and he's living, I said, and where are you living? He goes, I'm living in Sunnyvale. It's great. And I go, oh. So I was, you know, he's, he's very pleased to be here. So it's, it's a good group of people that, that we had with us. Well, they were there the whole day, but I was just there, uh, for about a couple hours in the morning.
Yeah, that's, that's neat to hear about. And, and Anna, I just wanted to say thanks for sharing the T C M update because we just approved the agreement tonight. So that's like the fastest approval. It sounds really positive, so.
So we'll be providing you with further information, future board meetings.
Let's see. Um, so we're on ten point one, the quarterly Williams report. Any? Correspondence? It's been quiet. Yeah, I think so.
There's some that taken last week.
Um, let's see, twelve point one, uh, other business or suggested items for the future. Changes to the board meeting calendar. I don't think we have any.
There are changes. It's time.
All right. So seven forty-five, that brings us to the end of our yeah, agenda. If we have a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn. Seconded.
Those in favor? A wonderful first day of school next week. I hope everything was smoothly.
Enjoy your delicious bread.